Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, October 19th, 2015. Would you rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And that will take us to item number two on the agenda. Approval of the October 5th, 2015 minutes is their emotion. Made by Mr. Schneider, second. Made by Mr. Powell. Any corrections? Ms. Gwalyumi.
Okay. On page... Okay. On page six, line number 237. If you could please change it to Board Member Gwalyumi asked about parent feedback, initial and ongoing, rather than in how it will continue. And then also that same page, page six, number, line number 243. If you could just change that so it says Board Member Gwalyumi asked if there were any additional insights or lessons learned that could be shared. And then page nine, line number 407. It said a thousand feet of district school property. I was thinking it was probably school district.
Technically speaking, line 407 actually was incorrect in the draft that was presented that evening. I think it was Vice Chair Barnes who pointed out to me after the fact that the letter should be cleaned up. So as it stands, I read it as school district property, but I had actually typed up and disseminated to all of you district school property incorrectly. So it was cleaned in the subsequent letter. So we should probably...
This is a typo anyway.
Yeah. It was a typo anyway.
Moving on to page 13, line number 566. And I just wondered if you could, we could change it to say Board Member Gwalyumi asked Administrator Chevonal to remind the board of what the prior year's surplus was. We all know what it was. It was really a reminder of what it was. And then line 583 on the same page, Board Member Gwalyumi requested a thank you letter to be sent. That's all.
Great. Any other? Mr. Schneider?
Just one. Page 13, line number 553. Isn't it, I think it should be $1 million, not .1 million dollars. There's a dangling dot in front of the one.
Good catch, I would agree.
Other than that, that's it.
Any others? Mr. Powell?
All right. I have one correction that is over several pages. So I'm just gonna, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna point it out once and if you just go through and catch it. Marge, help me, correct me if I'm wrong. Jerry Saint Armand, correct?
Saint Armand. A-M-A.
It is A-M-A. Then forget it. I don't have a correction that needs to go out throughout the...
It's correct throughout.
It is already correct throughout. I do have a couple others. Page five, line 185. Survey Monkey. Should that not be capitalized?
Yes. It's a brand name.
That's, okay, that's what I thought. I was having brain contusions when I was going through this. Same page, line 189. If we could insert the word employee in front of the word absences. So it should read, if she noted a reduction in employee absences, to make it clear that we're not talking about student absences. Same page, line 204. And Jake, if you could help me with this. What you are asking is if the teachers were going to be available for student access after school hours, correct? Okay. So if we could capture that to indicate, would the, does this negatively affect teachers' availability after school for student access?
What was the line number for that?
I'm sorry.
204?
Yes.
Yep.
And I believe, nope, I'm sorry. I do have one more on page 10, line 455. If someone could just check, I wasn't, I don't remember seconding the amendment, or the motion rather, but if I did, so be it. Does anyone actually remember? I thought it was Cindy that had seconded it.
To that point, I think it was Cindy because you, she seconded the motion and we amended that motion.
Exactly. That's exactly where I was getting confused with. Okay. Exactly.
So 455 is going to be amended to say seconded by Board Member Gwalyumi instead of...
Correct. And that's it.
Great. Any other corrections? Okay. I'm good too. So seeing none, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor of approving the October 5th, 2015 minutes as amended, say aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. And what is the student rep's opinion?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. And that now takes us to item number three, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, we'll close public participation and move to item number four. Follow-up to the September 29th Health Trust Summit. I would invite from Health Trust, our representative Ms. Debbie Clayton and our human resources director Ms. Linda Hastings. Thank you both for coming tonight. Maybe, is the green light, a bright glowing green?
Now it is.
Yes.
Better?
Much better.
Thank you. So to follow up from the summit, which it was Health Trust's first attempt at gathering as many of our member groups together in the same room and talking about several very important topics, we were very, very pleased that we exceeded our expectations. We had enough space for 250 attendees and we did fill it and we had a waiting list, which was again fantastic. So thank you for sending four representatives from Merrimack School District to participate in our summit. Overall, I've received summaries of the comments from the summit and I spoke to Board Member Schneider and he too had the same comment about the one glitch, you know, we had one session that maybe wasn't as spot on as all of the others, as it didn't pertain to New Hampshire public sector. So again, lessons learned. It was our first attempt and we were definitely going to do it again and the consensus was we would do it annually.
Great.
So to follow up from that summit and bring forward some information for you folks today, I provided all of you with a small packet of information. And the first piece that I will speak to is this brochure right here. To improve is to change. This is something that we have at Health Trust, worked very long and hard over. We formed a committee of employees in the beginning of the year to analyze the true gamut of employee benefit offerings that we have and realized that it was just unsustainable. We truly had 68 different combinations of medical plans, which is, was again, way too many to administer and keep up to date with the ever-changing ACA requirements. So we did look at our plans that had low or no enrollment and really tried to consolidate what we could make available to our member groups and still keep the most comprehensive, generous packages that we could possibly make available to you. So this brochure highlights the changes and how they will affect you as a district. If you open it up, it steps one through four. Step one will be the first change. So if you, you may or may not know that all of the employee benefits, all of the medical plan choices here at the district are Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield benefits and they're provided to your employees through Health Trust, which is a nonprofit public sector risk pool solely providing benefits to New Hampshire public sector employers. So your first change on July 1st will be the expansion of the Matthew Thornton Blue Benefit. Currently, Matthew Thornton Blue is the HMO plan, which requires a primary care provider to be selected from the network and that person must place all referrals for all care. Beginning on July 1st of 2016, individuals will be able to choose a primary care provider from any of the six New England states and primary care provider referrals will no longer be required. So it's a big enhancement for us, beginning on July 1st of 2017, and we're really excited to get that message out to your employees. Excuse me. The next change, which is also effective on July 1st of 2016, is the consolidation of some of our medical plans, which for you folks includes the elimination of the indemnity plans. So the JY, JW type traditional indemnity plans, those will no longer be available beginning July 1st of 2016. We have a plan in place currently that if any of the individuals that you have on that plan are early retirees, they're going to be contacted directly from our retirees specialist at Health Trust to let them know what's happening so that they don't feel that it's something happening last minute. They're going to have time to plan and think, et cetera. And they're even going to be allowed the opportunity to make a plan change before July 1st if they choose to do so. Meaning if they see the value in changing to a lower cost plan before July 1st, we're going to allow that even though there wouldn't be truly a qualifying event to do so. We're really strongly encouraging them to move to the lower cost plan and trying to accommodate them as much as we can. The next step, step three, effective on July 1st of 2017. This was always a big issue for many of our groups that do have deductibles on their medical plans. Currently, you have one plan that has a deductible component that's not available to any of the unionized folks, but it is available to some of your non-unionized folks. And with a group such as yourselves that have a July anniversary, it was always tricky to incorporate a deductible plan or introduce a deductible plan where the deductible would run on a calendar year. We had no other option other than to run our deductibles on a calendar year. So you'd have a deductible from July 1st through December 31st. It would reset on January 1st. So the employees had a bit of a difficult time during that transition period when the deductible would reset on January 1st. So beginning on July 1st of 2017, that will no longer be an issue. It will run on a plan year for any of your employees that are enrolled in that plan currently that has the deductible. We're basically going to make them whole for the period of January 1, 17 through 6, 30 of 18 and give them an 18-month benefit period for the same deductible. And then lastly, the change number four, which is effective July 1st of 2018, your school district is not affected by this change because currently the majority of your individuals are on, or all of your individuals are on preferred prescription drug options. So for any of you that remember the dollar mail of many years ago, that's being eliminated beginning on July 1st of 2018. But again, your district is all on preferred prescription plan, so there's no need to change in that aspect. Any questions on any of the changes that we're seeing in the future?
Any questions from the board on this? So I guess Ms. Clayton, I guess the question that I have is that the district currently offers three tiers of plans. We have the HMO, the PPO, right, and the JY. Did I say PPO? POS. Thank you. And what you said here for number two is that beginning in July of next year, Health Trust will no longer offer the JY, right? So even if we wanted to, we can only next year offer at least the HMO and the POS. I noticed on the back, there's some suggested options to consider in the future. Is that the correct understanding? And if so, do you intend to talk a little bit about maybe some of the suggested plans?
In terms of an individual that's truly, that's still enrolled in an indemnity type plan, whether or not they're an early retiree or an active employee, depends on what their answers might be. But you're accurate in the fact that it'll no longer be available as of June 30 at midnight next year. What they, we have in terms of recommended or the easiest transition for them, regardless of what reasoning they have for being on an indemnity plan at this point, we find and we feel that transitioning to a Blue Choice Point of Service is the most seamless, where you have a lower cost plan, you have the ability to still go wherever you want, whenever you want without a referral if you choose to do so. We definitely have some exhibits created for our early retiree population in knowing exactly that they're paying the full cost of the premium, but in terms of what we have for active employees would be different. I'm not sure how, if Linda might know the breakdown of early retiree versus actives?
In terms, in terms of the enrollment for our JY retirees, we don't have any one person on that particular plan. However, we do one of the active employees.
Okay. Great.
And we are, we're definitely planning on having individual meetings with them if they would like to do so because we do know it's a very personal choice for individuals to remain on those plans at this point. It's been our practice throughout many open enrollments to do exactly that, to sit with them with a laptop, look up doctors, look up certificates of coverage, to show them that they're, they're not going to go without or have less if they choose to move to a Blue Choice Point of Service plan.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was very helpful.
Okay. Well, now moving on to address the questions that I received from the board and thank you for sending them on to me. You'll see what we call an option sheet. You'll see some benefit codes for both medical, prescription drug. You'll see dollar figures here and these are current rates. I know, you may know that our board met on Friday to set your guaranteed maximum rates for the 2016, 2017 year. I didn't get those until 12:14 this afternoon, so unfortunately I didn't have the ability to update this, but I certainly will do that as soon as I can. So in looking at this option sheet, you'll see a medical plan code, which is the first row across the top. Next line down is the prescription plan code and then you'll see single, two-person and family monthly rates. The boxes that are shaded orange are your current point of service and HMO benefits. So that's the current combination of medical and prescription drug benefit, your current single, two-person and family monthly rates. What I've done, when you look down and to the right, is provided you with some lower cost alternatives on both families of plans. So there's a lower cost alternative in the family of point of service and two lower cost alternatives in the family of HMO. The next set of single, two-person and family rates you'll see is if you were to be considering changing the prescription drug benefit. And in how our prescription drug benefits work is highlighted in the box on the bottom. Individuals have a retail drug benefit where they can purchase up to a 34-day supply at the local pharmacy. And then there's also a mail order benefit where you can get up to a 90-day supply of medicine mailed to you at home. So depending on which prescription drug benefit you look at, you'll see the applicable copays per formulary type, meaning preferred, non-preferred and generic, as well as the correlating cost difference for single, two-person and family monthly rates. So just looking at the first row, the first column rather, the Blue Choice 3T20, so that's a Blue Choice three-tier plan with a $20 office visit copayment. That's the point of service plan available here at the district. And then I've highlighted on the left, PCP office visit copayment, specialist office visit copayment, et cetera, all the varying components at a high level of how that point of service plan works. In moving one to the right, you'll see that it is a BC 2T20. There are very minor differences between a BC 3T, three-tier and two-tier. When we first introduced the Blue Choice point of service plans, it really was to come up with the perfect marriage of a traditional indemnity plan of go wherever you want, whenever you want, and the HMO plan where you had to choose a primary care provider and have that person place referrals for all of your care because a Blue Choice plan allows you both. You can go wherever you want, whenever you want and pay a deductible and pay higher out-of-pocket costs, or you can get a referral from your primary care provider and pay little out-of-pocket costs. The difference between a three-tier and a two-tier is that with a two-tiered plan, it eliminates the middle option of self-referring directly within the Blue Choice network. We found over time that that was never used and so the next time we were building new point of service plans, it was more efficient to build just a two-tier. With a two-tiered plan, you're either seeing your primary care provider or getting a referral from that person, or you're self-referring. So you're accessing care without getting a referral. So that's that one shift to the right. It keeps your copayment, your office visit, specialist emergency room copayments all the same. It does increase the self-referred deductible by 100, from $150 per person to $250 per person. It does place a limit of 35 visits on the chiropractic visits. It limits the physical speech and occupational therapy visits to 60. It changes durable medical equipment from 100% coverage to 80% coverage after a separate $100 deductible. And then it removes the $40 eyewear reimbursement where someone can get reimbursed $40 every other year for contact lenses or a complete pair of glasses. So again, that's the next option for you in terms of preferred for the point of service family of benefits and you'll see the monthly rates listed there. Any questions on the Blue Choice?
Mind if I ask a question?
Hi Debbie, how are you?
Good Matt, how are you?
Good. We currently have the Blue Choice and then the, the HMO. So if we wanted to, let's say, offer something that splits the difference, that would be the BC 2T20, right in the middle. If we wanted to offer that, do we have to have a minimum number of participants in that plan to make it offerable?
It would have to be a total replacement of your current Blue Choice point of service plan.
Okay. So we couldn't do it in addition to? We'd have to replace it with?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
So if I understand that correctly, we can only have one offering per plan type, right? HMO or point of service, right? Or no?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Yes, in terms of Blue Choice.
Okay.
There are some variances with Matthew Thornton that I'll explain as I get further to the right.
We're jumping ahead.
That's fine.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next column to the right is your current Matthew Thornton Blue Plan, the MTB 20. You'll see the shaded orange box and you'll see how the covered, coverage works below. That has no deductible whatsoever, whether you're accessing care in the hospital. It says PCP referred deductible not applicable. There is no self-referred option, so that too is not applicable. Again, I'm speaking in terms here of the way the plan works today with the referrals. I'll definitely alter it when I make it effective for July 1st of next year. The wording will change because there will be no referrals required within that six New England state region with Matthew Thornton. So we need to change some wording on these option sheets. So I'm just going to speak of today, okay? In looking to the next column to the right, this is the first plan that I have on the sheet that introduces a deductible component. So that's when you look at the code, it's a Matthew Thornton Blue MTB 15. That means it's a $15 office visit copayment. IPDED is a deductible on certain services. That's what that code means in the Anthem Claims Processing System. And then you'll see the correlating single, two-person and family rates, whether you were to marry it with your current prescription drug plan or the lower cost alternative. And looking below, you'll see it's a $15 office visit copayment whether you're seeing a primary care provider or specialist. $100 to see the, to visit an emergency room, $50 for urgent care, which is exactly the same of all the plans we've currently spoken of. And then it does add a deductible component of $500 per person or no more than $1,500 of deductible for your entire family, but it doesn't apply to every service. It applies to the higher-end, higher-cost services such as inpatient stays, labor and delivery, high-end radiology like a MRI, CAT scan, PET scan, hospice and ambulance. So those higher-cost items, it does not apply to absolutely everything. If you just went to your physician because you had the flu, you'd pay a $15 office visit copayment. Everything's covered in full after that. If they did some lab, that's covered in full. If they said you need to have your tonsils out and you went to an outpatient facility to have your tonsils out as an outpatient surgery, that's going to be paid for in full. So those types of things don't apply and are not subject to that deductible. In moving to the right yet again, this is the plan that is available to your non-unionized folks as a lower-cost alternative. It is currently one of the lower-cost plans that we have and it's becoming extremely common for our member groups to put these plans in place to meet the criteria of the ACA in terms of offering affordable plans to your members. So this plan is different in that it tiers the office visits. It's a $20 office visit copayment when you're seeing a primary care provider and it's a $40 copayment if you're seeing a specialist. And that's any specialist, whether it's a dermatologist, chiropractor, physical therapist. So it'd be $40 each and every visit for those types of appointments. Same exact emergency room and urgent care. And then this plan has a higher deductible. It has a $1,000 deductible per person, no more than $3,000 of deductible per family. And it does apply to two additional services than that plan to the left and that would be for lab services and outpatient surgery. For labs and outpatient surgery, what makes it a site of service is the ability for someone to be a wiser consumer and really learn the cost of certain items. Because for those items, if someone chooses to go to a preferred site of service, they'll pay zero for their lab work and they'll pay $75 for their outpatient procedures if they choose to go to a preferred ambulatory surgical center or a preferred lab. Those are listed. I did a quick search surrounding Merrimack, so those are behind your materials to say, where are these facilities? Because they've got to be standalone independent laboratories and independent ambulatory surgical centers. If someone were to have an outpatient surgery in a hospital environment, it would in fact go towards that deductible. Yes, exactly. And then the other difference with the site of service plan is it breaks out physical speech and occupational therapy and the limit is based on per type of therapy as opposed to one overall aggregate, aggregate visit limit. It has 20 visits per therapy, so 20 visits for speech, 20 visits for physical therapy, et cetera. So that is currently being offered here at the district. However, you'll only see the highlighted, the orange highlighted because of the most common enrollment, most popular enrollment here at the district. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Okay.
Mr. Schneider?
So just, you said a couple of times, I just want to make sure I'm clear, that you said that the one that was the, the site of service plan that you listed, you said it was for non-union. That's because in Merrimack, it's only the, the union members are not taking, we're not offering this to the union members.
That's my understanding.
But it could, it could be.
Yes.
Right. Okay. I just want to, because, because it made it sound like it wasn't available to you. It's just in this district, this time.
It could certainly be and that's back to Matt's question in terms of, and what Chris was mentioning, what can you and what can you not offer side by side? In looking at this sheet here, in the Blue Choice family, so the first two columns, you'd have to choose one or the other. For simplicity's sake, if you look at columns three and four, you'd have to choose one of those, three or four. But column number five, the site of service plan could be an additional option for your folks.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So we could choose one, three and five, for example?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I know the questions that I received from the board did pertain to the Cadillac tax. So the next few sheets that you'll see is what I've done with our Cadillac Tax Calculator Tool, which I'd be more than happy to send to you if you haven't already received it. And on the box on the bottom left is where you'll see the single, two-person family monthly rates. And in the middle of the sheet, you'll see Merrimack School District. The first is BC 3T20, RX 102045. So based on the current single-two-person and family monthly rates for your Blue Choice plan, you can see the progression based on, kind of in the top middle of the page, based on an estimated annual percentage increase of six-and-a-half percent, how your exposure to the Cadillac tax would be from year to year based on that plan and the current, um, rates in place.
And Ms. Clayton, just for the benefit of anyone who might be watching this, can you just summarize for us the Cadillac tax and, and what that represents?
Certainly. Uh, the Cadillac tax is, has been introduced through the Affordable Care Act as a way of generating billions of dollars in revenue to help, um, to pay for the whole Affordable Care Act program. What it is, it's a forty percent excise tax on the difference between the cost of your medical plan and what the ACA has deemed the reasonable threshold for the value of, of the cost of your plan, what it should be. And they have placed a single-person plan to be no more than ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars per year. Or a two-person or family plan to be no more than twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars per year. So what this sheet is showing is if in fact you had this plan and it were to increase by six-and-a-half percent per year, how much higher over those thresholds would it be? And ultimately, what would the district's exposure be to that excise tax?
Wonderful, thank you. And I think Vice Chair Barnes had a question.
I did. I actually have one that got away from me because I had my hand over the question that I wrote down. So my own fault. Um, first, on the plan, obviously it's per employee enrolled in that plan that the tax would be, the exposure. So things like if we do, um, a benefit where we, you know, would say an incentive to take, say, a spouse's plan outside of our district, that kind of stuff doesn't factor into any of that, so that's good. But a question I had before you got into this was, you said for the MTBS, uh, uh, zero S twenty, available to non-unionized groups?
That's current. So if someone is currently not represented by a bargaining agreement here in the district, it was made available to them this last open enrollment on July first if they wanted a lower-cost plan.
Okay, but it's not a regulation of the plan itself to be to non-unionized groups?
Not at all.
That's, that's where it was a little vague to me.
Okay, so yeah, my apologies. No, not at all. Anyone could have chosen it. It just didn't work out that way at open enrollment.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
So you can clearly see, looking to the right on that Blue Choice exhibit, what your potential exposure would be. And then if you just turn the page, I did the same exact thing for Matthew Thornton. So your current Matthew Thornton Blue Plan, reducing your exposure. And then the third sheet would be if you were to keep your Matthew Thornton Blue medical plan exactly the same and just change your, the prescription plan. It looks as though that's the first rate level where the district could avoid the tax. And just to go back from the previous meeting that I presented at, uh, that we were, I think we talked about this briefly. This is not Merrimack School District's average increase. Yours is lower. But for discussion's sake, I wanted to put in our Health Trust overall book of business percentage average. So that's something that when you look at the Cadillac tool itself, the calculator tool, you can change that. So based on what your, after, depending after GMR, what that percentage increase will be, you'll have a, a better picture as to what you could use in that spot. Whereas I, when I was using your true average previously, your current Matthew Thornton Blue Plan avoided it. Plugging in the overall Health Trust average, you would need to change the prescription drug plan to avoid it. So by all means, that's something that you as a, as a group can, can change based on what you feel is, is most accurate.
And, and in terms of that, were you utilizing a blended historical average of district, uh, rate increases or the current, uh, guaranteed maximum rate increase?
When we looked, the previous percentage was just Merrimack School District and I had a seven-year average.
Seven-year average, okay, that's what I was going for.
It was a seven-year average. And it was yours alone. And then the six-and-a-half percent is a seven-year average of the Health Trust overall group.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. And to answer a couple of the questions that I received, there was a question about whether or not if the district were to offer a standalone vision-type plan to their employees, whether or not the cost of that vision plan would be included in the calculation of the Cadillac tax, and that answer is no. And then the question was also provided what, um, who pays the Cadillac tax? That is really the toughest question we get. We get it frequently and there's really not a lot of guidance thus far. I did bring a couple of slides to, um, to help answer that question. So we do have a slide of who's responsible to calculate the excise tax. It's the employer's responsibility to ca- to calculate the excise tax because people can come and go. People can change from single-two-person family at any point with a qualifying event, at open enrollment, they could totally change their plan. So there's a lot of, uh, moving parts. And then who's responsible to pay the excise tax? The liability to pay the tax is on the coverage provider. So we know without true, true definition or true guidance from the ACA or the federal government that if we, if Anthem, we at Health Trust, are deemed the coverage provider, it certainly would need to be passed along to our member groups. But we don't have that level of information thus far. There were a couple of releases over the summer where it was shared that the, it's just more and more items are being applied towards the calculation of the Cadillac tax, including the cost of the plan, the total cost, so your employee or employee contribution, all flexible spending account contributions, which would be primarily your employer contribution, uh, I'm sorry, employee contributions, any and all HRA contributions if you chose to provide an HRA. That would be employer funds and salary reduction HSA. So that means if you allowed your employees to have a high-deductible health plan in which they had a health savings account, any pre-tax deduction that they would do per pay period, that too needs to be calculated into the, um, calculation of the Cadillac tax. So it seems to be getting more and more things are being added to the calculation of the Cadillac tax over time. So that's the clarification that we've received thus far. I mean, things are constantly coming in. I know they had one over the summer where they released information. They were waiting for feedback and we haven't, I haven't heard any new information about that. But we do our best, once we get something that we receive, we've analyzed, we truly absorb it, we get the information out to our groups as soon as we possibly can. We tend to become a big fan of the email blast to get that out as, as timely as we possibly can. And then if something rises to the occasion where we need to hold a workshop, we'll do that as well.
That's great. Are there any?
Any additional questions?
Questions from the board? Uh, none from the board. Mr. Chevanel.
So as it stands right now, um, we can say that the healthcare provider would be responsible for paying the excess forty percent Cadillac tax. However, the healthcare provider or providers, being a business, needs to recoup that money. They would recoup that money in the form of higher rates, I would imagine.
So far, we see that that's not going to be an option, whereas we set our rates in the future. And it looks as though the district will be calculating or reporting who's on a Cadillac plan after the fact. So it may be an after-the-fact type fee, additional fee.
Yeah. After-the-fact additional fee?
Where it would be entirely separate from the true single-two-person-and-family monthly rates. It would be, here's your tax responsibility.
Okay. That would be paid by the Health Trust, so to speak, or passed on to us?
We don't know. We don't know how that would all work. In fact, we've, we've discussed it at length to say, we've got to set rates to go into the future. Can't have that tax exposure in addition to those rates because we wouldn't have the numbers beforehand to know who would be enrolled in the plan that generated the tax.
Yeah.
So it's, I'm, I don't know if it's going to be a quarterly, monthly, annual where you too, as an employer, would send to us who's enrolled in, in those Cadillac plans. But what if you then want to pass that along to your former, your employee, but then at that point they're a former employee?
Right.
There's a lot of very confusing, very technical issues with this, uh, potential Cadillac tax.
Yeah, it's just, it's just ironic that, I was just thinking that if it was paid for by the, the healthcare provider in the form of increased rates, it would provide an increase in the Cadillac tax revenue that the government would be collecting because your rates are going up. So it would always be an increased revenue stream each and every year out of your pockets, taxpayers' pockets, or my pockets coming up. It's just kind of amazing to me that this hasn't been all figured out before this was signed into legislation. But then again.
We hear a lot of ideas being pushed around, whereas those numbers, should they be considered regional? Should the New England region have a different threshold than the rest of the country?
Well, look at the cost of healthcare in the Northeast. It's much higher, obviously, than in other areas of the country.
Right. I know there's a big movement, I think it's Ohio, to say that it wouldn't be subject, or public-sector employees wouldn't be subject to it. But it's my understanding that in the law itself, it clearly defines the inclusion of public-sector employees. So I don't know how they would get that backed out. It's, it's a busy, busy topic that, um, that's the trickiest one where we have individ- we have groups that are negotiating contracts that hopefully don't bring them into that year because it will start on January one of two thousand and eighteen, even though maybe your contract would renew on July one of two thousand and eighteen. You, you want to kind of be aware of that January one, two thousand and eighteen date.
Yeah, we're cur- currently putting ourselves in the position of, of taking care of all the IRS reporting that goes along with it. And, uh, that's a, also an increase. It's a huge burden to, to do that. But, uh, it's another service that we're looking to contract out as far as to get that done for us, to make it a little more streamlined as opposed to us, uh, doing it ourselves, collecting all the data. But anyway, regardless, I just wanted to have a little chat with you about that because I know it's kind of frustrating. You want to say, well, this is the rules, but you can't say this is the rule.
Not yet.
But it makes it extremely difficult when you're negotiating a, a contract. So you have to have that, um, you have to have that, uh, play in there to, to give you some options on both sides. Okay, thanks Debbie.
You're welcome.
That's a good point. Uh, Vice Chair Barnes had a question.
I did, sorry, thanks. Um, I know you mentioned twenty-seven-five and ten-two are the Cadillac's tax benchmarks for two thousand and eighteen. And at this point, because of how we do things like our healthcare cost containment, we keep our premiums lower than the average. At Health Trust, we're in a good place even without changing our prescription benefits, which is yay, great, you know, go Merrimack. However, uh, the question is, two thousand and nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, do those rates go up on average six-and-a-half percent as our insurance rates go up on average six-and-a-half percent?
The guidance.
The threshold, the threshold.
The guidance says that those thresholds will be adjusted for inflation beyond two thousand and eighteen, but there's no defined percentage.
Let's, let Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, no, no, they, they actually, at, at the summit, they answered the question and said that the average healthcare increase has always gone higher than the, the average inflation rate. So they said, always plan that it's never going to go in your favor. It's because that question was asked, so.
Right. College costs and healthcare, right.
So, so I guess essentially, when we're looking at this as well, how far below the, the benchmark are we right now, percentage-wise? You don't have to give me dollar signs, but are we like scraping just below that benchmark where we're exposed to the tax? Or are we, as, as the Merrimack benefit, not the, uh, the state average that you provided us?
That would be that second, um, if you look at the second exhibit with the Cadillac tax calculator tool, this is based on your Matthew Thornton Blue benefits, so the lower-cost plan that the majority of your employees have. And it shows you to the right what your exposure is.
Right, and maybe I misunderstood. I thought that was, you were using rates that were the state average. These are actual Merrimack rates, is what you're saying?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear. These are your rates?
Our rates, okay.
But this is not your average. This is not your seven-year average, but these are your rates.
Okay, that's where I'm misunderstanding. So we basically are, are looking at a minimal right now, odes per employee.
For, um, Matthew Thornton, the Blue Choice is a bit higher because it's a more costly plan.
Correct.
Yes.
So, um, but that's, you know, keeping all things whole and not making adjustments to, say, prescription plans.
That's right.
And is that, is that the trend of where things are going to make that adjustment to get under the benchmark? Is, um, looking to adjust prescription plans?
It just so happened that when I was creating the option sheet for tonight, I tried to find the next step, the next logical step in plan design change that helps you avoid the tax. And then basically everything else that's going to be less costly, we know will avoid it. So by just changing the prescription plan and the Matthew Thornton Blue plan, you avoid the tax. And then we know from going to the right, all the other plans will as well.
Okay, thank you.
I tried to do the smallest step to get there.
Thanks. Are, are there any other questions on this? I want to thank you. This was, uh, most informative. Oh, Mr. Powell.
Not a question. I just wanted to, um, jump ahead quite a bit while Debbie is here to thank her, um, well, to thank the Health Trust rather than, and, and you specifically. At our last meeting, um, Rick Grenier shared with us the, um, the amount of money that was given to us as a, uh, reward, if you will, from Health Trust back to, to the Merrimack School District in order for, um, the Employee Health Committee to go out and, uh, come up with a creative way to spend it that benefits the most number of, of employees. It was a total of almost twelve-hundred dollars that the Health Trust gave back to us. And, um, Debbie, help me explain where that twelve-hundred dollars, uh, came from. What did we do to earn that, that amount?
Well, repeatedly, um, each and every year, and, and keep in mind that your slice of life wellness programs run on a calendar year as opposed to a school year. And every year, we ask the employees to complete what's called a health assessment. And that's part of the bonus, part of the incentive is if you bypass your previous year's participation in the health assessment or completion in the health assessment, that qualifies you for incentive money by sending a wellness coordinator to our Coordinator Academy. That entitles you to incentive money. There are a couple of other incentive categories that I'm not, um, well-versed in. But basically, it's on your behavior, your performance, your activity generates those different levels of incentives that we do return to the school district.
So what it comes down to is the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee is having a huge impact on what is happening in the district. And I, I know that Andy, um, shared with us that Merrimack was highlighted at the summit, um, a couple of weeks ago. And I wanted to thank Health Trust again for, for acknowledging Merrimack and, and pointing out the good things that we're doing.
You're very welcome. And like I shared with Davis at our meeting, Bill Byron and I, your wellness coordinator, we didn't even know ahead of time that that would in fact happen. But you really are, um, the group that we ask people to mirror and ask people to follow your lead because the participation that you have at your Healthcare Cost Containment Committee level and the information that gets shared at, at that committee level and the information that gets shared back with your employees, we just see so many phenomenal things that we will, we continuously share that with anyone that's willing to, uh, listen or anyone that's asking us for advice of how they can make benefits an easier topic of discussion or wellness participation to be an easier topic of discussion. And we, we do use you as an example quite often.
That's wonderful. Um, clearly, this will be, uh, a continuing conversation as more and more clarity hopefully, um, comes about, um, as it relates to the Affordable Care Act. But, uh, the, the wealth of information, uh, that you've provided on, um, how it works, current understanding, options available to the district is hugely, hugely helpful to us. So I want to thank, uh, you Ms. Hastings and you Ms. Clayton, um, for coming tonight and presenting to us. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And that takes us now to item number five, comparison of two Merrimack Middle School Extended Learning Opportunities. Camp Maitina and Camp Sergeant, I would invite to the table Merrimack Middle School Principal, Mr. Adam Carragher, and, uh, the district's newest administrator. Uh, we would like to welcome- And uh, the district's newest administrator, uh, we would like to welcome Assistant Principal, Ms. Shawna DeMore, welcome. We're happy to have you in the district.
Thank you very much for uh, having us here and inviting us back here this evening. We do have a little presentation we hope to uh, get up and running for you in a little bit, just have some. Some of the pictures that we, we took of our, our recent excursion to Camp Sergeant. Just a few weeks ago, so we're gonna put those up and just kind of let them cycle through so you can, something to think about was as uh, as we review. These two experiences. So. Two and a half years ago, Debbie and I uh, came to you, the, the school board, about a plan to shift from. Camp Mitina, which is a two-night and three-day experience. To a different experience closer to home. That ultimately uh, requires one day in the fall and one day uh, follow-up in the spring. The reason for us even approaching wasn't that any of the situ- any of the, the programming that was occurring was, was not good. The problem that we were faced with was threefold. The first was a financial issue. The last year we attended Camp Sergeant was uh, a hundred and twenty dollars. Now that was up over the course of six years from eighty dollars, which was my first year here when I first got to go on the experience in, in the year uh, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Another issue that we, we began running into uh, was attempting to find chaperones. Parent chaperones, uh, parents who are willing to go and spend two nights up in the woods with a bunch of middle school boys and girls, for some reason, we're becoming harder and harder to come across. We also were having trouble having staff chaperones, just with the way that things are going and, and developing families and other commitments. It is really asking a, a lot of chaperones in general. The other, the other um, significant concern that we had was, was related to liability. There's definitely some significant liability that goes along with bringing kids to an outdoor experience that extends. Over the course of not only three days, but two nights as well. You know, so that being said, I wanted to lay that out and just kind of to refresh more than anything else. You know, I, I know in a, in a little bit, I'm gonna uh, lean to, to Mrs. DeMore. To provide a little bit of information about the Camp Sergeant experience because she actually got to go and experience it this year. But I thought it would be smart to start off with a little bit about Camp Mitina. You know, as, as you can imagine, uh, a day in the, in the life of any camp activity is full of different, uh, different, a number of different activities. Involving team building, uh, involving science. You know, the experience that the students had at, at Camp Mitina did provide connections to a number of different. Curriculum points, particularly in the area of science, I would say. But also, one of the things that we value a lot at the middle school is the social component of, of helping students to become. Team work, team members to encourage. You know, and, and ultimately value those characteristics. So. Everything that the students did, I would say to you at the Camp Mitina experience, from, from the low ropes to the high ropes, and the water ecology to the tree identification to the. To the, to the night experience where they actually went out and walked and, and looked at the stars was, was really a great residential experience for them. And ultimately, as I, as I reiterated before, the only reason we sought change, change was because of the financial component. The difficulty finding chaperones, and then of course, the liability concerns. So ultimately, we, we presented an idea of doing something at Camp Sergeant, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. DeMore to talk a little bit about that experience uh, this year.
Thank you very much, well, it's nice of you to invite us here because I've met most of you, but it's really nice to be invited here to present. So I was able to go to Camp Sergeant and the day that I spent the entire day there was on a Wednesday of torrential downpour. So I was able to experience it in all of its glory and see the Plan A and the default Plan B. Because some of the activities, when it was raining, they had to kind of shift around and change ideas. One of the wonderful things that I learned from Mr. Carragher. And talking to some of the staff was that they decided to start it in the fall. So they could kind of underscore the themes throughout the year and then culminate in the spring. And so you're kind of starting the year off with these seventh graders coming into the middle school and really starting off with that team building experience. When I went, um, I, the very first station that I experienced was this farm experience in which. A farmer that lives on the grounds and has all of the animals there, she's a fifth generation farmer, came and because it was pouring rain. All the farm animals got brought inside, indoors. And she talked to the kids about how when she was growing up, she discovered and made up Punnet Squares. To determine the probability of certain farm animals getting different traits and genes and that. Connected really well with the science unit and the math that the kids are going to be learning and throughout the year. The low ropes again, it started raining again throughout and I went in and I saw them working, cooperating, and they did an activity indoors with ropes and. It was all about working together as a team and then talking about it and having dialogue of what worked well, what didn't work well, how they could adjust. Same thing, when there was a break in the weather, they went outside, they were canoeing, they were kayaking. They had to default to team building again because there was a strong wind in the currents and they had to decide how they were going to row across this lake. What I found, in response to parent input and feedback, it was a little bit different this year, I guess last year it went a little bit later. And so after getting some parent input and feedback, they decided to end the day a little bit earlier this year, so the culminating activity was at six thirty. And so some of the parents didn't see the culminating activity, I, I actually, I'm sorry, I have to correct myself. The culminating activity started around five, five thirty, so when the parents came, they might not have seen that, but they were able to take. Part in kind of seeing what the grounds looked like. Had some pizza with the kids, could make us s'mores if they wanted to. And then, so at mo- I would say, almost all of the parents made it to pick up their child, most of the parents. Were there to take part in um, some part of the acti- some part of the eating the dinner. Before um, the end of the night. So those were some of the, I would say some of the pros where the staff was, I would say, very helpful and engaged. I thought there were some creative Plan Bs when the weather was prevent- preventing us from doing the original planned activity. Some of the cons and some of the pieces that we've reflected on is we should have a rain date for each of the teams um, moving forward. And keeping, keeping in mind that it's still about forty dollars, and so the cost. And then um, in the spring, we, we solicited feedback from the staff and we talked to some of the parents and they would like to see. Some smaller groups, maybe vary the activity lengths a little bit, where some of the longer activities like the canoeing and kayaking. Maybe that would be one, while two smaller activities could take place with another group. Um, and then think about having later spring dates, so we could think about warmer weather or not, that muddy rainy spring weather.
Alright, thank you very much. So overall, uh, I guess you have kind of two experiences that, that uh, have been presented to you and, and two ideas. What I would say to you is, is our attendance for, for this year's uh, Camp Sergeant experience was right around ninety-five percent. Now that was who, who I'll plan to attend, I know uh, due to weather, there may have been um, some, some individuals who, who chose to stay home as opposed to come into school. Overall, I would say to you, I, that the experience that our students had was a very positive one. It was one where they got to really put their hands on something that they're gonna be working in science in the upcoming months. With the genetics, with the Punnet Squares. Something that I hope that they call on, on a daily basis, and these, these, these social skills, the teamwork components. The, the problem solving components, as you can see from some of the ropes course pictures. The component of encouraging each other. All of these are extremely valuable to us as, as, as a middle school. And as a matter of fact, you know, when I was reflecting upon it, I couldn't help but think of how, how much this experience really aligns with, with our uh, mission statement. And uh, and our mission statement is, is reach and what that stands for is. R, responsible and respectful citizens. E, effective communicators. A, academic achievers. C, critical thinkers and problem solvers, and there was a lot of that going on. And finally, H, happy and healthy students. And I think when you think about it, the experience for our, for our, our students with that framework. It, it, it's something that is, that has been a good experience for, for our students, so. We would like to, how, answer any questions that, that might be out there at this point in time, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barnes.
Actually, you're gonna have no surprises, Adam, because we just spoke briefly this afternoon. Honestly, I put this on the agenda before my daughter even went this year. For a couple of reasons, and it's because my son went last year. So I had questions, just kind of reaching out from that and knowing this was coming up, this was a good time to talk. A couple of things, I completely understand and um, always have supported your reasoning behind shifting from Mitina. But it's all about um, expectation and delivery. When it came to last year, my son was, is, who's an eighth grader now, went to uh, Camp Sergeant in the fall. And it was a full day, it was good weather, so different than my daughter's experience, which I'll also go into. But at the end of the day, they had something, it was a skit, it was a team building skit and they had small groups doing it. And they had this kind of like outside theater with a small stage area and some like, I guess they're seating, but they're like made of logs. That is kind of like a theater setting, and they did skits and there was some team building with that, it was very engaging. And that's where the parents participated. So we got to watch our kids, we got to watch other people's kids um, kind of do a problem solving day developed, one day developed skit, which was, I thought, a fantastic culmination of the day. It did show that uh, dynamic building. So I will go to this year, where um, the culminating event was, and I got there at four forty-five. So I saw all the parents come, we signed out our kids so that. It was light out, so they were our kids as of the time we arrived. But it was just, it was a slice of pizza, it was s'mores and s'mores were done at like a hundred dollar. Basically one of those little fire pits you buy at Home Depot. They're like, they're just a metal thing, they're portable. And there were about ninety kids and, you know, you figure at least the equivalent of parents. And one little fire pit, and that was your s'mores event. So the parents stayed back, we didn't even try it, you know, but all the kids kind of went in, so it was, it was not. A, a culminating event to me says that there's going to be an organized presentation or understanding of the day's events. And there was none of that. So I was, I was disappointed this year, last year there wasn't a culminating event, it did encapsulate the day. So I felt that was lost, and I asked why they didn't do it this year, they said because it was dark and um, people got cold. But this, the parents are the ones that were coming for that experience, left their work early, drove, which I did. And it was different, and, and we, we found value in that as, as parents who invested forty dollars for their child to go. This year we got a piece of pizza and didn't dare to get the s'more because it was, it was kind of mayhem, so we didn't bother. And there were a bunch of us that kind of stood back. So I, I spent the, that day observing. So I, I didn't see that, and I, my daughter was there for the monsoon of a day, so. And I told Adam as well, other than the farm animals, which she could have gotten at the Deerfield Fair that weekend. There was nothing that couldn't have been accomplished on our campus. Because she did not do the ropes, she did not do the kayaks or the canoes, but she spent the same forty dollars as those who did. So I feel bad for those kids that would have looked at that as an opportunity and didn't get it. And there were a lot of them. So there was not really a lot of return on investment for those kids. In the spring program. I know that I left work early, got caught in traffic, I was going to meet my um, husband. For the closing ceremonies, and the closing ceremonies were a clipboard, handed to my husband, said sign out your kid, the event's over. So we actually, again scrambled to leave work early. To do this culminating parent, parental and child experience, you know, surrounding this program and it wasn't there. So again, expectations and delivery. On top of that, when this program was presented, and you know I'm on the Greater Woods Subcommittee. The talk was to supplement throughout the year with the science curriculum. The foundation work that happens at the first day of Camp Sergeant throughout the year do things on Greater Woods with the, the backyard that we have. And ironically, last year, three of us on the Greater Woods Subcommittee had seventh graders, not one of our kids went out once to Greater Woods. So there wasn't that follow-through again. So, because we just sat around and um, so we have, at, at Greater Woods, we invited. Administration to come and talk to us about their goals for the property, for the district, so that we could be a partner and. Offer resources and, and insights as to what to look for and where to find it and how it might fit in your curriculum and. Matt came, but that's, there was really never any follow-up and from my understanding, there's not been any um, continued dialogue, you know, not that there wasn't an effort. To, to try to get that understanding and, and continued collaboration. So when I look at Mitina, although it was an investment, it was three intensive days, we worry about the liability, but we knew that. There was time and opportunity to get something out of the experience. And the plan, you know, obviously, if you can't, if the rain comes out, you have three days, we'll fit that in eventually. There's not that, when you have a small window of opportunity, we do need a rain date, there's no option to that. Because as I said, my, you know, my daughter's group could have done everything at that ca- at, in the gymnasium. And not gone and gotten, you know, that experience, so I do think we need to look at this. If you're going to put that much, I think, of an investment into a shift, we need to make sure we're getting what we're looking for. And I don't feel that that was happening, which is, you know, last year, the biggest thing was not doing the follow-through, the supplemental work. This year it was, I just felt, you know, and honestly, this was on the agenda before we even experienced this year, and this year I thought was. Was not what we were looking for, um, it's not what we were, as a board, we're told was gonna happen, that these kids would be getting an enriching experience. And uh, we'd be, you know, paying a higher price than the average. Average field trip for it, but it didn't come. And there's no Plan B for them, for those who didn't get that experience because of, you know, the circumstances that were, which was torrential rains. So that's, that's my two cents, I've seen it from year one and year two, I've never seen Mitina, but I've seen Camp Sergeant for two years. And I'm not sure it's, it's, this, this plan is doing everything that um, we were promised it would do.
Thank you, any other questions or comment? Ms. Gualyumi.
My son also went on the field trip, and we were lucky that we got the Thursday date, not the monsoon, was it a Thursday? Did you have Wednesday?
We had Wednesday.
I had the next day, yeah, I had Thursday. And the only thing I would say, I'm sure it's one of those things that it's just an optimization as time goes on, and I think you're right about the rain date. You know, that's just, that's not a good learning experience, I think, for anyone if it's, because it was cold that day too, I remember. Because I remember counting my bussings, because I was like, do I have rain boots for him and all of the other stuff um, that I would have needed to send. But the, I guess, and, and thank you for putting it together, by the way, I know it's one of those things that it's. You know, it's a lot of work to put these things together by the time you organize it and the subgroups and the different activities. As well as on the fly or what the other alternatives were given the weather, um, particularly on Wednesday. But my only concern, I guess, was the cost of it. So um, for parents being, was it forty dollars, I'm just trying to.
I believe it was thirty-eight dollars, but yeah.
Yeah, so I know we have a line item in the budget that we pay for the trip itself, right? And this thirty-eight dollars was for, don't we pay, we must have some, I recall we have something for the trip in the budget, right?
I, I think it's just the bussing.
Just the bussing, okay. Well, that makes a little more sense to me um, regarding the cost, but it just seemed kind of expensive for the. To kind of go, it's probably the closest field trip that, um, or the closest type of a, a trip that my children have ever gone to and probably the most expensive. To kind of go around the corner. And, you know, with the food and everything else, it's certainly, we could pay for it, but not everybody can, and so that was just a concern that I had, but.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
So I'm, I'm at a distinct disadvantage because with no kids left in the district, I can't share the experience around Camp Sergeant. However, um, I have had the opportunity to experience, and I use the word quotes around experience, Mitina twice as a chaperone through the years. And listening to, to Shannon and Cindy talk about the way it occurred. They're right to an extent that when you're up there for two and a half days at Mitina, you do have time to switch things around if the weather's bad, because I've had rain there and stuff. So rain dates are definitely good because you, you've got a lot of, a lot smaller window of opportunity. You talked about participation rate of ninety-five percent. That certainly wasn't the case in Mitina because cost was a big prohibitor. Because one of my co- questions to you was gonna be, so those five percent that didn't go, were there programs at school that they participated in? Or something at school that they could go? Or something at school that they could go? Because I would imagine on those days that it's bad, you have to swap out and be prepared to do things one versus the other. So I would imagine that, that sort of flexibility. I don't know what Camp Sergeant has in terms of other bookings for their facility, I know with Maitina, you're locked into those days, because you had a planned way ahead. But that being said, the other comment I'll make is, the times I did go to Maitina, it was late in the spring. It was after the snow was all gone and everything, I think it was like in, in May, I think we went, so it was right near the end. So my comment would be, if you're gonna do this outdoors, that you do it right after school starts, so like in September. And you do it right before school ends in May, so that outdoor experience can be enjoyed with the same kind of things Maitina did. I, I, it'll be interesting to see over a couple of years how the two, the spring and the fall occur, you know, how they are, how, how you've got the, the events more structured, you know, especially for the parents, I think it's important to, to have that. But, you know, think about sort of those, those dynamics and talk to Camp Sergeant about rain dates and things, because I think that's important.
Ms. Gualyumi?
And I think, and I agree, by the way, with the reasons why we made that change. I totally understand why we went from Camp Maitina to this. But one of the other reasons that I recall from those discussions was also so that, not only so more students could participate, but those that maybe had some disabilities that might prevent them from being able to participate. So I was hoping to get some feedback from you on if, if you felt this trip could accommodate, obviously, it could better accommodate, but if it's, if it was satisfying your expectations on, and how we would involve, you know, all of our students.
I, I would definitely comment that it does involve a lot more of our students in that regards. It's, it's a little bit simpler of, of an opportunity, a little bit more closer to home. Obviously, that has a huge benefit of being closer to home, but also very accessible. You know, Camp Sergeant, obviously, you guys have, have been there and seen some of it, even on the, you know, potentially a walkout to the, the ropes course, the low ropes course, it's, it's well maintained. So we were able to capitalize and use that.
Great. Any other questions? The, the conversation actually spurred, spurred a question for me. Because some of the feedback that you've received, you actually had shared as things that you're looking for in the future, right? The concept of a rain date. And you had talked about getting feedback. You talked to staff, and you said you talked to some parents. Obviously, you got some parental feedback here tonight. I'm just curious what the mechanism for parental feedback on the trip was. Was it informal, anecdotal, or is there a group, a survey? How, how did you collect parent feedback on the trip?
I would say anecdotal or, or informal conversations. You know, when, one of the things I would say, one of the, the nice things about the trip is, we do see, I would say, almost every single parent at some point in time, and, and, and so we do, you know, ask, you know, I even asked the students as they were leaving. But again, more informal and anecdotal than anything formalized.
So I guess, in addition to some of the suggestions, I, I would suggest in, in the future, perhaps, something a little more formal to be able to quantify the experience. And again, it may differ vastly, as it did here at the table, in terms of the day that it was held on, right, and conditions. But certainly, having that information, right, might help to, to better guide modifications to the program in the future.
Thank you.
I, I want to thank you for coming out tonight. I know it's a long day for you, so it's been probably more than twelve hours you've been at the job. So thank you for coming, thank you for sharing the experience. Welcome to the district, it's wonderful to see you.
Thank you.
And thank you for having us.
Wonderful. Have a great night.
You as well.
And so that now takes us to item number six on tonight's agenda. Planning for future funding of the Student Resource Officer, SRO position at Merrimack Middle School. And, oh, actually, I dismissed Mr. Carragher a little early. Ms. Moore, you have a pass if you would like to leave. And so I will turn to the superintendent to kick this off, and I think she'll be joined by the Assistant Superintendent and Mr. Carragher in discussion.
Thank you. So the reason for putting this topic on the agenda is, as you know, we are just beginning the budget process. And I have found that conversations with the board about some topics prior to getting into the full of the budget yields results. And so this is really about what you think about something, and tonight is about the beginning of a conversation. So the first is, we have a Merrimack Safeguard grant that has funded, as part of its elements, an SRO position, a Student Resource Officer position at Merrimack Middle School. And I'm gonna have Mark talk about what the grant says. Meaning, the grant goes for a period of time, and at the conclusion of that time, or as you get toward the conclusion, the expectation is that the party or parties will pick up the SRO position. We have not had a joint meeting in a period of time, but when we last met, I remember the Town Council Chairman talking about the importance of this grant, and if we were down the line to get into cost sharing or anything else, it would be nice to do it ahead of time, or at least talk about it. So an important thing is to talk about it with the board. Also, it's important, I thought, for Principal Carragher to weigh in on the position. He worked with the SRO as an assistant principal, but more importantly now, as the principal. So I am hoping that he will share its importance from his perspective, and that Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin will talk in terms of the grant itself and what the grant says, really. And then I want you to know that I also have had a conversation with the Chief of Police before I came to you tonight, and also with the Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, Paul McCally, to just see where they were in thinking, so that we could share all of this with you, and then you would provide us with some insight. So do you want to start off, Adam, and talk about the position itself? It's, it's, it goes beyond Tom Prentice, who we think a lot of, but it's the, it's the position, please.
Absolutely. And it is hard to decipher the two, because very quickly, as, as those of you who know Detective Prentice has become, you know, ingrained in the culture. What I would, what I would say about the particular position is, there's an incredible amount of value to having a, a, a school resource officer. Part of what they're able to do is really provide the students with an interaction with somebody, allow them an opportunity to see them in a, in a different light than what you might see them if you come across them while they're in a patrol or doing something a little bit more duty-oriented. And the reason I think that this is important is that it really builds on that relationship and builds on that, the, the student's willingness to go forward and to share. I know I would, I would say, in my role as, as assistant principal, having, having somebody like him there to, you know, ultimately to just kind of be a calming force in the hallways, in the lunchrooms. You know, seeing the kids in the hallways. You know, there's just something that providing that component of safety, almost, is, is just invaluable. I would also say about, you know, again, trying to separate the individual, which is very hard to do. Trying to sep- separate the individual from, from the actual position. You know, having, having a, a uniformed officer around in a situation where the student is, is potentially harming, harmful, or potentially harmful to themselves or to others, you know, having somebody there who is able to, you know, assist and just be there again is a calming factor overall. You know, his, his role in the middle school, it would be next to impossible to define everything that's done. But definitely has been able to set up relationships. And I think that's one of the most powerful things that, that he has been able to do over the, or the position is able to do over the course of time, beg pardon, so.
Perfect, thank you. So now I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin to talk about the grant itself.
So when, several years, seven years, seven years ago, when Principal Wolfline wrote the grant, part of the thing that she was trying to demonstrate, rather, and requirement of the grant was to be able to put into place an environmental change in the culture of the middle school that would contribute to conversations about substance use and abuse such that they'd be reduced. And so the suggestion was that a school resource officer may well be that environmental change. Developing relationships as Principal Character described. Developing relationships, understanding from students before things happen, you know, what are, what's, what's, you know, what's the culture? What's, what's, what are people worried about, what are their concerns, what are their stressors, what are their challenges, and so on? And to have that person of authority has proven to be very, very helpful, and has been, in fact, the environmental change. As part of the stipulation of the grant, the requirement has always been, like many grants are, that will provide seed money. If you want to propose that X or Y is the environmental change, we'll give you seed money to demonstrate that. But as a expectation, as an expectation of the grant, we would tell you that you need to promise that you will build a sustainability plan so that our seed money won't be for naught. So in other words, we will allow you five years, or if you should be successful enough to get an additional five years, the funds to be able to establish that change, whichever a coalition chooses to name a change. For us, it was the SRO. And then you have to develop a sustainability plan, so that when the money goes away, this change stays in place. As a, another factor, the grant specifically says that you have to have a sustainability plan in place, particularly in year seven. So that doesn't mean that the entire cost of the change, in this case, the SRO, has to be assumed in year seven, but it has to be, to begin to be assumed in year seven with an expectation that it would be increased in year eight, in year nine, and then in year ten, so that by year ten, other entities, in this case, the school district and the town, would assume the financial responsibility for that change. If that can't be demonstrated, then the seed money could be removed at any point. So it's important to be able to demonstrate that a plan is in place, and I stress, a plan with gradual increments towards achieving, you know, a total, total weight of the cost, or shared weight with the town. So, and once that's demonstrated, then we've met the promise that was stipulated in our acceptance of the grant. So that's, that's a pretty important thing. So the Government Project Officer, GPO, will come to our community sometime this fall, and will be looking for evidence that we have begun a plan to assume that responsibility, that financial responsibility for the change, that the seed money of the grant has been able to put in place over a period of time.
So, you know, kind of like where to start, or at least just have a conversation. So the first thing I did was to talk to Chief Doyle just about the notice of this. And because he has been affiliated with Merrimack Safeguard from the beginning, he clearly understood the notion of perhaps getting into a cost sharing. And if that were to happen, I think the thought always was that if the two entities, if the Town Council and the school board were going to be into cost sharing, that we might look at a fifty-one percent, forty-nine percent split. So in other words, the town, the Town Council or the police would oversee this position, but we'd also be a partner in the cost sharing at forty-nine percent. Now, when I say this, I put it out as a concept, I just put it out there. Could not go anywhere, but at least just for conversation. So then, in talking to Assistant Town Manager, Paul McCally, and Business Administrator Chevenell, both together, because they work together currently on taking care of the cost for this position, meaning we are the keepers of the grant. And so the invoice comes from the Finance Director to us, and the grant is what takes care of the SRO position. So if we were to begin somewhere, if the board thought it made, if, if it was fruitful to go forward and do something to make an overture, the question is, how would we begin? And so what I asked to have the Finance Director do was to put forward all the costs affiliated with this position for the year fifteen, sixteen. And if we look at those costs, it's a hundred eleven thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. And that's from where we start, we would just look at that. And so what might a first step be? A first step might be ten percent of this. So in other words, we would look in next year's budget for sixteen, seventeen, and put in ten percent or eleven thousand. What Matt has shared with me is then what would happen a year out, when the invoice would come. We would take the greatest portion from the grant and eleven thousand from the operating budget to say, to, to pay for this position, and that would be a beginning. So I, I shared the entire concept, I share parts of that, to just show you that we've had some conversation. And I think, having been affiliated with grants over time, I realize about them going away. And a lot of times, what happens is you get caught up in the grant, and it comes the last year, and it's like, what are we to do? So if anything, this begins the conversation ahead of time. And we seek your guidance on this. We don't own the answer, we simply put the concept before you to say, can we have a discussion about it? To know whether it should be included in our operating budget this year or not.
Hands are going up everywhere. I think Mr. Powell had his hand up first.
Thank you. Mark, I just want to ask a couple of clarifying questions, if I could. You said that one of the pieces of the grant is that there be a sustain- sustainability plan in place by year seven. Was that also in the first grant that we got, so by year three, there should have been a sustainability plan?
That's correct.
And was there?
Yes.
And what was the plan?
So the, what, all that was required in the, in the year three, because at that point, you know, it's not clear that we would apply for a second, or if we did, that we'd get it. So in the year three, the sustainability plan had to do more with community, that we would have community outreach. And so that the, that the nature of the uses of our funds, that hundred and twenty-five thousand, in addition to Officer Prentice, would support a level of community outreach, and that we would have a, a plan for maintaining, you know, relationships with the youth council and, and which we have, and so on and so forth. So that was the extent of the requirement for, the sustainability plan is defined differently in year seven than it was in year three, basically. So the sustainability plan in year seven is more, are you prepared to name your environmental change? And then, and then work with the town and the entity, the school district entity, to support this person in year three. It was more, do you have a plan to sustain the momentum and the initiative?
It was more, do you have a plan to sustain the momentum and the initiative?
So it wasn't about money as mu- in year three as it is in year seven now?
No.
Okay. If, and, and I'm playing devil's, devil's advocate here. If we're not able to fund this position, partially, wholly, whatever, at the end of the grant, obviously, the money stops. Are we then required, are there any terms in the grant that we have to reimburse any of the, of the seed money, as it were?
It wouldn't get to that, because as I understand it, when Betsy Hood and I traveled to Washington last year to officially receive our, our second award, it was explained to us that the, sort of the lucky select group of people from, of coalitions from around the country who got a second year, second five-year award, would have to be able to assert to the government project officer that we actually would begin to assume the cost of the change, different from year three. And so if we couldn't demonstrate that, the chances are that we would lose the money now. So we could theoretically not be, it's not a guarantee that we get this money every year. We have to show certain benchmarks. And so it wouldn't be that we'd reimburse. It would be that we would, that, that money that's currently given to, was awarded to us. We would say, they would say we hadn't met the, the expectations of the grant.
Okay. So that's why it's incumbent upon us to start this now, so that we can ten, continue receiving these funds for year four, year five? Or, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Mr. Schneider.
So can, can you remind the board of the way that the resource officer in the high school is funded?
So the cost of that is solely picked up by the Merrimack Police Department salaries, benefits. We do pay for his cellphone out of the general fund budget, and we pay for some conferences that he goes to. And that's about the extent of our involvement there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gualyumi.
And that brings about an interesting point, because if that's how we treat one, why wouldn't we treat the other? And I think that it's a position that will continue to get the management oversight from the police department, continue to get training, supervision. And the, this forty-nine, fifty-one kind of cost sharing thing confuses me a little bit because it's not within the precedent that we have. I guess if, if there were any first steps that I would agree with, it would be going to our town council and asking them if they would fund that position, knowing that it's a benefit to the community. It ultimately comes out of the same taxpayers, same community, same everything. And so I guess that would be, that would be what I would hope for.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barnes.
And actually, Sid, I'm just going to play right off of that. The biggest words I have are why, same taxpayer on my notes. So it is the same taxpayer. The one thing, you know, that's clear is we are not the employer of this person. So we are funding, and I've always heard from our joint meetings that if Mark Doyle needs the school resource officers to be in a different part of town, that's where they'll be. So we have access to them, but we don't have ownership. So we don't have, we don't have a guarantee of them. So forty-nine percent to me is beyond generous. I do think it should be funded by the town. I think it'd be who's the town. One of the things you said, Adam, was we have someone there for a child who is harmful to themselves or to others. Well, any police officer would go to anyone in town, regardless of their location, if they were harmed to themselves or others. So they're just doing the job of the police officer there. And when it comes to the culture, I do understand what you're saying. But that'd also behooves the police department to have open dialogue and, and get the exposure of those at risk, because it means we're preventing crime instead of, instead of fighting it. So for that reason, I, it's, it's a police job. I don't think we should be funding it at all. But I do think it's, it's a worthy position that belongs where it is, and the whole community pays, receives dividends from that effort. So I don't see, I have no concern, or, you know, I'd be very disappointed if this position doesn't get sustained if there's a funding question. Because I think at the end of the day, we will be worse off as a community for not having them where they are in the middle school. That being said, I look at your forty-nine percent and I question it wholeheartedly, because we have a hundred and eighty-day school year. It's a three hundred and sixty-five day calendar year for an employee. Of course, the days off, and I'm not worrying about that, because you could take it off during a school year too. And that's fifty percent of the calendar year as it is. So the hundred and eighty days of school versus the three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. And then we're going to pay forty-nine percent, so we're paying for a hundred percent of the time he's actually serving as a school resource officer in, in theory. Above and beyond that, I believe the school resource officer has a joint title of juvenile officer, which is a police function, which basically is dealing with children and committing crimes. So that being said, I think there's so much of this position that has no tangible responsibility within the school building that I would have a hard time at forty-nine percent to start, but I don't think we should be paying a dime to begin with. I think we are providing him an opportunity, in a space, in an audience, to prevent crime and to quote unquote patrol. He is patrolling when he's doing those things at our school. And by patrolling, he's, he's doing what someone would do in a cruiser at the outlets to make sure that people don't commit crimes there. But he's doing it at, at a critical juncture for our, for our youth before they make that turn into, into a life of crime, honestly. So, no, I'm, I'm not in support of funding that, but I am in support of the position being the way it is. And I do think we need to talk to our council about, about that.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider had his hand up.
Yeah, one of the things, so we've, I've been the liaison in the safeguard for at least a couple of years now. Well, but more recently with the second part of the grant, to really look closely at what the impacts and, and, you know, the, the coalition as a whole has looked really hard this time about community-wide impacts for this, in particular, looking at, really looking at the data coming out of the middle school, the high school, what the risk factors are. You know, I'll talk about the person only because it's hard to talk generically, but, but Detective Prentice has been not only active in the school, but active in the community in helping to really round this out, because it's really truly a progression of going from this, the kids in the schools up through, you know, as they go into members of the community and things like that. So the function, while it may exist within the schools, you know, and it's really interesting as an observation, we rarely talk about Officer Murray in the high school, but yet the function he performs there is probably more critical to the exposure of, of substance abuse in the community. And we talk about Officer Prentice only because he was the grant receiver. So in many ways, my observation is that it's a community-wide effort. There's really no functional difference or role difference between Officer Prentice or Officer Murray. They're both detectives now. I keep wanting to go OP, you know, but they're both detectives. So they should be treated the same. I believe that the way that it's set up for the high school, where we, we help with the training and the other things like that, is what we as a district could throw in, is, is sort of our commitment into it. But I agree with, with Shannon when she talks about how when, when something occurs, their number one job is to serve the community as a whole. And so, so from that regard, you know, we don't talk about it in safeguard, but the reality is that's the equivalency. So I'm, I'm sort of on the same page here.
Thank you. Mr. Marcus, you had your hand up.
Just wanted to ask a question for clarification. So you had mentioned that ultimately it's coming from, it's the same taxpayers. So that means, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're still paying the same amount of money regardless of which organization, for lack of a better word, funds the position?
Yes.
And now that I get that, a follow-up question for the superintendent, would, or Mr. McLaughlin. Would we still be eligible for the grant if the town council began to pay for the RSO? Or can we only be eligible if the school board pays for it?
So it's an excellent question, and it pertains to the conversation here. The, I would just suggest that we spend some time looking at what was proposed in the grant, because the grant doesn't make distinctions about one pot of money and two pots of money. They do support the idea of a community supporting whatever the environmental change is. We named the environmental change, the school resource officer. The expectation, as, as was written in the second application, was that there would be a partnering. That was just, so it doesn't mean that the board has to do that, but that's what was said, was that it would be a partnering, and there's not distinctions between, you know, this pot or that pot. So I don't exactly know the answer to your question. I think that it's better than if the, for the remainder of the, the grant, that, that some entity other than the grant paid for that resource. But the expectation, as was outlined in the application, was that it would be a partnership. Because in fact, I would just say there is, there is a qualitative difference, you know, in the function of the role in one respect. I mean, yes, of course, that person is drawn when the police need, but there, there is really a site-based, school-based function that, that is unique to other officers. And the distinction I would draw between the role of the SRO at the high school and the middle school has to do with prevention, and the grant very specifically highlights creating environmental changes that support prevention. So one could argue that when you're already at the high school, that's later in the game, not too late, but later in the game of prevention. And in the middle school, it's earlier in the game of prevention, and that's really one of the critical things that this grant speaks to. So just a offer for what it's worth.
Can I ask just a, a follow-up on, it's related to the mechanics that Mr. Marcus was describing. So if I understood the funding mechanism for the position today, we receive, the district, I'll be clear with my pronouns, the district receives an invoice from the town for the cost of the SRO officer on some periodic basis. And it is funded out of the monies from the grant. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so in the proposed construct, the idea is the town would similarly invoice the district for the SRO, and eleven thousand of that would come out of the operating budget, and the remainder of the cost minus eleven thousand would come from the grant, leaving a surplus of eleven thousand dollars in the Merrimack Safeguard grant for Merrimack Safeguard to do something with.
Well, as far as the, as, as far as the grant goes, I mean, there are some costs here that are going to go up year to year.
Right.
I'm not sure if the grant takes that into account, if it increases on a year-to-year basis. I hear, see Mark shaking his head, no. So you, you have to take into the, take into the fact promotions. You have to take into account the
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining, the CBA. You have to take into account health insurance. So there's a lot of things that are in that grant that would probably be paid for or taken up by the increase in those kind of costs. But not all of it, but it's, some of it is there.
So I, I guess if the, if, here's what I'm getting at, is if, if we need to show progress against this, and it's pretty clear that the board believes that this should be a town-funded position, even if the town were to say, we are going to begin to fund the position, would that mean they would invoice the district for slightly less than they're currently invoicing? Again, leaving additional monies for Project Safeguard to use in order to promote prevention?
Yeah, that's correct.
Something along those lines. Okay, great. That's, that's helpful. I saw some hands up, I think. Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, the only thing I just wanted to play off of Chris's question is, we're, they're asking for eleven thousand dollars, which would be the difference between what the grant would cover. But the hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents covers a calendar year, correct? Twelve months? So they're asking us to fund.
Nobody's asked anybody for anything.
No, please, I don't even, but I have to correct that, because I don't want even that said. I asked to have the complete package for what the SRO is at the middle school, and I was sent the complete amount. I simply came up with that as an example. It could be five percent, two percent, no percent, because I wanted to start somewhere, because I thought you'd say, in contemplation, it would be, what is the total amount for this position now? And they didn't get into months or anything. I just, so I gave you the total position, and I offered ten percent, just arbitrary. Right. But no one asked for anything. I began this conversation because I felt the need to. If we'd had a joint meeting, I probably would have raised it up there, but we haven't had a joint meeting. So to me, even to have it in the minutes that we discussed it is important. So if the person comes to do an audit, we had a conversation as compared to not saying anything. You know, because we are in the second set of five years, and so the notion of losing it, I mean, I just felt it important to lay it out there. We talk about a lot of things during the budget process, and I don't know the outcome. I just know that I want to start the conversation at the table. So if anything, I would say to you, what didn't we give you that you would want? And I think you, it sounds to me like we need to go and be in front of the town council at some point. That's what it sounds like. But if we were to go further, I'd also want you to tell me, what is there that you wouldn't, you weren't fed tonight? Information, data, whatever, that would help you if you wanted to go anything, anyplace further. But no, I don't want it said, anyone demanded anything.
Oh, no, demand is the wrong term, but, but
It was me saying it.
The eleven thousand dollar difference would be the difference in the total compensation versus what the grant will cover versus what you're going to use for other things, which I guess, so the point is, with that scenario, the town wouldn't be covering any of the compensation for that position, correct? That was my question. I, I phrased it obviously dreadfully. But the eleven thousand dollars we were just discussing, that would be, that we would put in our operating budget in this scenario. That, that would, the town wouldn't be covering any of that position based on this conversation, correct?
Based on this scenario, an invoice would come to us, and eleven thousand would be paid out of the operating budget, and the remainder would be paid from the grant.
You're off again.
I'm sorry. Eleven thousand would be paid from the operating budget, and the remainder would be paid from the grant.
Yeah. I, I think if I can elaborate a little bit, everybody here is committed to the school resource officer at the middle school.
Yes.
That's a fact. Chief Doyle is committed to the resource officer at the middle school. So is administration. For ten years, we've been fortunate enough to have this paid for by a grant. Some point in time, the grant goes away. So we're trying to think into the future to make this partnership that we've developed with the police department, with the town, continue on infinitum, basically. And we're making the assumption that another partnership with the town, police department, where they pay fifty-one percent and we pay forty-nine percent five years from now, is something that will definitely get the job done and make, make sure everybody has some skin in the game as far as that position goes. So the premise behind the additional ten thousand dollars in the operating budget for sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen would be an additional, is to get to that forty-nine percent that would happen in year five, when the grant goes away. So it wouldn't be, oh, by the way, have to raise the budget fifty thousand dollars, but it would be an additional ten, incremental, small steps.
I think the board understood the intent, I think, and the need for demonstration of sustainability in the near future. I think what I'm sensing from the board, and it makes sense to me as well, is ultimately the sustainability shouldn't really come from the school board, but, but rather from the sustainability shouldn't really come from the school board, but, but rather from, from the town. So, you know, I think it goes without saying, everyone at this table supports that position and then some, and recognizes how fortunate we are to have had the first occupant of that position actually be Detective Prentice because he's really put his personal imprint on what that role can and, and should be. And, and so we're fortunate to have him. We're, we're also extremely fortunate to have a really strong partnership between the school district and the police department in the fact that we have Detective Murray at the high school, Officer Kelleher, we have police officers visiting the schools often to read to elementary students, we go through joint training exercises together. It really is a partnership. I think that administration should be commended for taking initiative in looking at the grant and making sure that we have a sustainability plan in place and finding a way to do that. We were quite fortunate to get the second grant, and I think looking ahead and making sure that we have it for years eight, nine, and ten is extremely important. And I hear what the board is saying as well. Officer Murray is a police officer first, and, but he works out of the high school and performs a function. I recognize that Officer Prentice's role, or Detective Prentice's role, is slightly different in terms of prevention, but he is a police officer first and who happens to perform that function in school. You know, we talked about the left pocket and the right pocket, and at the end of the day, the cost to the taxpayer is the same. And, you know, there's some precedent at this table. I think early in Vice Chair Barnes and, and my tenure, there was some question about the funding of one of the crossing guards for the, the schools. And the town had actually requested that the school pick up the cost of the crossing guard. And the same conversation actually ensued at the table, which is, we don't want a crossing guard reporting into the school district, it's not our primary function, traffic control is not what we do. And that it makes perfect sense for that function to be within the police department. And at the end of the day, the taxpayer doesn't care whether, you know, you're charging them from the school district side or the town side, they're paying the same amount for the function. And I think the concept remains, I think the question becomes one of, what is the appropriate action to be taken? Because clearly, we need to take action in terms of a sustainability plan. What I'm hearing is, at a minimum, whether it's a joint meeting or not, because we've requested those a couple of times now, at a minimum, an agenda item at a town council meeting related to Merrimack Safeguard and the need for a sustainability plan expressing the board's position, such that the town begins, or we find some way to begin jointly with the town in showing a sustainability plan is really what I'm hearing, the next action here is probably, probably needs to be. Is that fair to, fair to say? Yeah? Okay. So, yes, Mr. Schneider, thank you.
Can I ask a semi-related question since we're on this topic?
Yes, sir.
So this gets us, we talked about funding and how, the way the funding is done today. Is the cost of the resource officer that we reimburse the town more than what the grant is today, or less?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Did I understand what I said? We, we get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant per year to fund the school resource officer. Is the amount all used of that hundred and twenty-five? Because here's where I'm going with this, is if we come up with a plan that says, we as a town show that we're going to start putting skin into the game, the sustainability plan for it, there will be money from the grant that is not applied to the school resource officer. There could be some today, but we know there will be in the future. Is the intent behind the grant that that, those funds, in lieu of funding the school resource officer, be used as part of the Merrimack Safeguard organization until the grant goes away?
Yes. And in fact, the, there are a couple of things that were written into the grant, into the, into the new grant that talk about that. So if we were to, what would we do with funds that we realize when, when the cost of the SRO has begun to be absorbed, you know, by some other entity? And so it would, it would be basically enhancing community outreach. And that's defined as trying to, so it would be the equivalent of when Lynn Lyons has come into Merrimack to talk about anxiety. Then we would have money to fund speakers and others to come into the community to learn about substance abuse prevention. Currently, as Matt pointed out, there are not a whole lot of funds left over after Officer Prentice has paid from the grant for that kind of activity. And in fact, that's been less over the years because, as Matt pointed out, the numbers stayed the same, but.
Yep.
You know, the cost of that individual have increased. The project coordinator's role needs to be expanded from what it's able to do with its limited, you know, salary out of that, to partly fund the enhanced community outreach, to make connections with other coalitions, because there's an expectation that coalitions work together to form larger coalitions, and that has to be met. So there are a number of things stipulated that would be done with the realized money.
The only reason I ask is that, at my last report about Merrimack Safeguard, one of the topics at the Safeguard meeting we discussed was advertising and being, going out. And we struggled at the meeting, we're, I don't know if you were there or not there, I don't think you were, money, where we were going to get money and funds from to do things. And we talked about going to entities in the town and things like that, you know, businesses, not the government businesses. So I think in our next Safeguard meeting, we need to talk about the possibility, while in parallel, we talk about the funding and the sustainability, we need to say, what can we as a safeguard potentially do with any remaining funds over the period of time? Because I think we've never as a group talked about that, about what we could do with that, knowing that in parallel that this is, this is happening. So we need to tether those conversations together.
Right.
It's sort of a education for me, listening to this conversation, as to how it affects the other bodies.
Yes, right, exactly right.
Any other, yes, Mr. Marcus?
So even after your excellent summation of the issue, I still wanted to go on record as disagreeing, because the way I would look at it, and I'm the student representative, so take it for what it's worth, but the way I see it is, considering, as you said, the taxpayer doesn't care one way or the other, I would think that it would be better to keep as much influence over the resource officer position as possible within the scope of power of the school board, considering he has such a profound and direct effect on school life and student life. So I wouldn't, I would, I would disagree with sending it to the town council to have them fund it, because it has such a profound effect on education and educational facilities that I think as much, I don't want to say influence, but as much influence as possible over the position should be held here where education is the prime priority.
Thank you. I value your opinion, Mr. Marcus, for everything that it's worth. What, what I take from Mr. Schneider's question is an interesting one as well, as it relates to Safeguard and in terms of some sort of a budget for Safeguard. Right now, the budget for Safeguard sounds as if it is fully funded off of the grant, the majority of the funding goes to fund the SRO, and that there are initiatives as part of the plan for Safeguard that might need money moving forward. So if we were looking at some sustainability and some partnership, the funding of the SRO is one component of that, the funding of outreach and, and promotion, right, is another piece of that. And that would be something perhaps the board might entertain as, as a cost-sharing endeavor as it relates to the program, but not the funding of, of the position. Ms. Guayumi?
And along the same vein, so would some of the other training that we've incurred, that type of thing would also fall under something that we would support.
As part of good faith efforts. Okay, excellent. So what I will do then, as an action based on the consensus at the table, is to formally request an agenda item related to Merrimack Safeguard at the town council's table in the immediate future. What's that? Or again, ask, I could start there, absolutely. What would, what's the board's pleasure? Vice Chair Barnes?
I agree with Davis. This is not the only issue that we've been trying to collaborate with, and obviously with everything from, you know, our budget season coming up. This is an opportune time for us to collaborate and have an open dialogue about common interests.
Okay.
This isn't it, there's a lot.
Great. I will go that way. Okay, I was looking for the consensus. All right, we will request a, a joint meeting. Thank, again, thank you. All right, all set? Moving on. Item number seven, educators' responses to August Academy queries. Dr. Mark McLaughlin, thank you, Mr. Carragher. And thank you, Ms. Demore.
Thank you. Run. Yeah. So, so you recall that we, this is our discussion about August Academy is coming really in two phases. A few weeks ago, we talked to you about some of, we tried to characterize the experience at August Academy and what our goals were and what our intent was. And now, I talked to you a little bit about some feedback that we tried to generate from the educators who were part of that experience. What I'd start by saying is that, you know, everything is a choice. And so we did not choose to spend a lot of time asking our educators things like, what did you think of the format? Not because that's not important, but because in the relatively limited time that you ever have for generating feedback, especially when you have, you know, three hundred and thirty people in a room, you try to be strategic and we, and given the, given the nature of August Academy, which was really very different than others have been, you know, to really sit back and think about where we are philosophically as educators, where we are trying to go as modeling the behavior of reflection and sort of metacognition and thinking about our practice, we thought we'd like to take the limited time that we would ever have for, for reflection and ask teachers really to engage in, where is your head at right now? Both as a teacher in 2015, as a teacher in Merrimack, as a teacher who's just had three days of conversation about inquiry as a metaphor for how we engage in just thinking and so on. And so, and so that's what we chose to do. And so really, what we did was, we asked folks to think of, if, if we start with really, what's on your mind? We asked them to free write. What's going well? Is, in your experience as an educator in Merrimack, what's, what's going well for you? What would be an area of concern for you? And what's on your wish list? If you could push a button and have things as you would have them, what would that be? And so before I just talk to you about that, I'll just give you a couple of the parameters. The, the metric was open-ended responses, so we did not provide a multiple choice or anything. We asked teachers to create, you know, a space on their, you know, paper, in a block, a quadrant, going well, not going well, wish list, and, and write and think. And so we gave them individual time and group time to do that. We distinguished aggregate responses from personal responses. So a personal response would be something like, what's going well? I like the writing program. What's a concern? I'm concerned about how to integrate inquiry into my math class. What's a wish is that there was more consistency in following rules in my school. That would be personal. And so there were, you know, with three hundred and thirty people in a room and you haven't provided a parameter for what they're going to say, there's all kinds of things that some people could say, and we've taken that all seriously, it's all important feedback, and we would take those as, we'd refer back those to the grades. So they were like, I'm an elementary person, I'm a middle person, I'm a high school person. So we were able to take that and funnel that to the appropriate place and say, let's look at that. But we were, what I'm reporting to you is more in the aggregate. And what we said was that aggregate responses would need to exceed fifty percent of the total responses. So if there are three hundred and thirty people in a room and fifty-plus percent said this, we would say, well, that's a significant thing, so that's what I'm reporting to you. So for what's going well, teachers overwhelmingly said collaboration. I can tell you, not just from August Academy, but from the year bef, the two years prior, the two prior August Academies, when we've brought teachers together from across the district, they just love that. And the thing that they seem to really like most this year was the pre-K through twelve experience. Collaboration, being able to listen to each other, coming from different grade levels, from different schools, being able to have time to say, here's a problem or phenomenon I'm dealing with, how are you dealing with it? I never thought of that. That level of collaboration, that level of dialogue, overwhelming. Very pleased to say that data-driven instruction is something that people find going well. I would tell you that that is a finding generally from the elementary grades, not surprising, given that that's where our focus has been. Not to say that we're not moving into the middle and high school, that is really where our focus is now, but it's not a surprise and it's gratifying to know that that would be coming from the elementaries first, because that's where we started that discussion about data-driven instruction. Standards supporting, standards that support and define parameters. In the old days, I don't characterize what the old days were, but let's say, more than five years ago, you know, you would, instruction was really, in many respects, you know, not framed, there were not really parameters. And so a teacher would be left to his or her own devices to figure out, you know, what's important here. And that might be very different from what my colleague would think is important, and that, the impact of that is on students. So as I've said so many times to your table, if I, you know, happen to have a teacher who likes to diagram sentences, you know, then that's what I get. And regardless of whether that seems to be validated by research, if that's what I do, that's what you get, good luck to you. So the standards really help to normalize a student's experience around certain objective criteria that's, you know, I think highly vetted for rigor and so on. And anyway, the standards, the clarity that that provides, teachers were very clear saying going well. And technology, so I joke with Nancy Rose sometimes, I'm going to compliment you again and I, you know, I have to hold my nose, I pretend, because Nancy's so funny, we get along so well, and I joke with her about all that she's done for us. But the fact is that technology supports really are increasing, they really are enhancing, and that's due to Nancy's work, and teachers are feeling it. Not just technology for technology's sake, and I think that you heard us say very much that what August Academy was attempting to do was to not just say, you know, hey, we're going to throw, you know, more software at you, or let's give you a ton of apps, or let's just plug in more devices, but purposeful use of technology for an instructional end. And, and that's. And, and that's, um, how Nancy, I think, has really been able to very carefully position the conversation. Uh, concerns, overwhelming number of teachers talked about time. Uh, time, uh, is always a teacher's, uh, in a, in a sense, worst enemy. And that's by virtue of the fact that teachers are good people who know that there's a lot to instruct in a given year and, you know, whether it's holidays or other events or passing times or the volume of expectations in a standard or what have you, time. And so it's not a unique finding, but the educators, given that the whole theme was inquiry and how might we think differently, they've been thinking about time. They've been thinking about their own time management, articulating ways that we might be able to help prioritize in collegial conversations, time. Depth versus breadth is a concern. Coming from our previous kneecap-based, uh, you know, New Hampshire standards that have been in place for a long time and then prior to that, nothing. It was, again, it was, the conversation is always, well, I can cover this much, but this deep. Now the conversation is different. We're asking people to really maybe have less breadth, um, but more depth. The idea being that when a student really deeply understands a, um, a principle, that they can apply that to other cases that they see like it, rather than spending lots of time talking about varieties of instances of kind of the same thing. And so that though is a challenge. It's just a personal challenge in a unique point in time as people are getting used to new curricula, new standards, and they raise it as an area for them. And then differentiated instruction. What seemed to be clear in the amended comments that people would make is that they appreciate the fact that one size doesn't fit all. But if time is a factor and I need to differentiate instruction based on the multiple kinds of levels of learners in my classroom, that's a challenge. I would parenthetically add that our district's response to intervention initiative is very much geared at providing supports for teachers along those lines. So if they raise as a concern, how to or should I or why should I? Um, our current initiative, um, that's gonna go on for quite a long time, an RTI, is designed to help teachers with that. So it's expressed as a concern and we're trying to offer some support for that. Wish, well, if the concern was time, no surprise that the wish is more time. And that's a difficult one to really resolve. You can't do without recess and you can't, um, you know, we're not looking at a two-hundred-year day and going to school in the summer and we're not, you know, so, but it's tough, it's really about efficiency. And we ask the teachers very openly, if you say a concern or a wish, we invite you to come to the table with possibilities of solution. It doesn't have to just be this way, it can be this way. So, uh, more clarity around expectations concerning inquiry. Not a surprise, given the fact that we had just spent three days talking about the value of inquiry as a model for instruction. We tried to spend three days talking about that. Admittedly, back to the format, which I think some people really liked and some people perhaps didn't like as much. The format was, um, challenging, intentionally so, and it was different. And as a result of that, I think that, uh, there are people who still need our district to sustain the conversation about what inquiry means to me as instructor. And what are you expecting me to do? Is it just I keep asking why all the time? Or if not, um, what is it? How do I model that behavior for my students? So we have work to do. A wish, um, is to have more technology. This was a, a wide-ranging response, so that's a good thing. However, the thing there that, um, I think as a leadership team we'll probably wanna challenge a little bit is when you say more technology, you have to be more specific. Back to my comment before, technology for the sake of technology, because we don't wanna be a district that has just lots and lots of shiny machines and nobody really using them productively. So we wanna try to refine, when people say have more technology, we wanna provide challenge back to say, give us examples of what you do with the technology and, by the way, what technology are you talking about? Because that's a pretty generic term. And then a wish is more collaboration with other teachers. If I could say to you what the biggest feedback that we got from teachers off August Academy was the, um, the, the delight and the surprise at the delight of being with other people from other schools and other grades and just, you know, I've heard so many anecdotal comments about, um, from people talking about, um, observing two teachers they'd never met before, holding forth for a while about a particular topic that was a subject of the, um, August Academy, and just being amazed at the level that they talked about it and the way that they would like to talk about that in their classroom. And, um, and, and so just loving to be in the company of others. So clearly I think our message is, um, at least for now, we're onto something when it comes to people working with each other. Even if sometimes that's, oof, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. But it's kinda nice to know sometimes what you wouldn't touch either, but it's, you gotta know what's out there. So, um, that's the summary of the open-ended responses. Then we asked teachers to complete a technology survey. Back to the point of trying to get a little bit more of a sense of what is it that you, when you think of technology, what are you thinking of, what comes to your mind? And so, uh, this was a series of more pointed questions with defined answers. And so, um, one of the questions is what would be the best source of new information to you using technology? What would be the best source of new information? And overwhelmingly, it was video, online or otherwise. Relative to educational video, I am most likely to watch what? And the answer was educators reflecting on their practice. So the teachers, when given a choice, how would you like to learn new information using technology? Videos. What would you most likely, what kind of video would you most likely watch? The kind of video where educators are reflecting on their practice. And, um, what preferred technology, video technology? So this was if this, then go to two, or, you know, so if it's video, uh, what preferred technol, uh, what mode would you like to engage in in PD? And it was live-action video, real-time, teacher with student. So, um, that could be not real-time, real-time. It could be a video of a teacher in real-time that you watch, rather than a teacher talking about their practice. Or it could be literally watching people. So there are reasons why that is, um, challenging, given state regs around that. But it just speaks to, um, it just speaks to where, uh, at least the teachers at August Academy were when they were given that question to think about. So, um, that's really the summary both of the open-ended responses and the technology survey. Of course, in such volume, there are lots and lots of other details and I can try to answer them as you wish, but that's the summary of the, of the responses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comment or question for the Assistant Superintendent? That was extremely, um, informative and, um, I, I found it quite interesting that our strength, right, was also the weakness, right? We're really good and people like the fact that we're collaborating, um, and we want more, damn it, right? Which is, uh, is fantastic to hear and see. And so I'm very glad, um, you collected that and were able to share it with all of us as it informs future work in this regard. Thank you. So that now takes us to item number eight, other correspondence. Is there correspondence to come before the board? I have a few, um, that I'll share. I received, and I know Vice Chair Barnes also received a phone call related to the middle school boys soccer team. I had also received calls related to the boys' high school cross-country team. And there was something, uh, the board received that I neglected, uh, or we neglected to share at the last meeting, um, and I think it's worth actually sharing and promoting. And that is that, um, State Farm Insurance, um, is conducting a program called Celebrate My Drive, which, um, is a program that, um, uh, is being conducted by, uh, the State Farm rep here in Merrimack, Dan Bantham, who, uh, is instrumental in helping to, uh, put on the yearly mock DUI that, uh, is done, uh, really by the greater community and spearheaded by the SAD organization, um, at the school. Well, this Celebrate My Drive campaign is, uh, has a program slogan of two N two, or two N two. Two eyes on the road, two, two hands on the wheel. Um, and they're promoting it by, uh, having, um, an award given to, uh, twenty-two schools throughout the country. Will receive a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, uh, some portion of that money to be used, uh, for, uh, good decision-making programs, like those, uh, supported and promoted, um, through SAD. Uh, the way that the program works is the schools, uh, submit, um, an application and of those schools, um, one hundred finalists will be chosen and then, uh, from that it goes to an online vote, um, and the top twenty-two are then recognized. On October twenty-third, which I believe is this Friday, at the, uh, football, uh, game, uh, they will be at the game handing out Celebrate My Drive stadium cushions to the first hundred-twenty-five people in attendance in order to, uh, promote the campaign. And so, um, I would like to, on behalf of the district, uh, say thank you, uh, to Dan Bantham for, uh, working with the school in the many ways that he does and, uh, hope that we get selected as a finalist, uh, such that we can, uh, get this award. By the way, one of the schools, uh, selected, probably the top winner, uh, gets a free concert by the band Echo Smith, um, which, uh, would be pretty cool. You don't know Echo Smith either, Jake? I wanna be like the cool kids, cool kids? Yeah? No? Okay, you're not a cool kid. I think you're pretty cool. Anyway, um, so more on that, hopefully. Any other correspondence to come before the board? That's the closest I've come to singing at a meeting. And I'm not going there again. Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to comments. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item number nine, new business. Is there new business? Ms. Gualyumi?
Okay, um, I just wanted to request a couple of agenda items for our next meeting, which is November second. Just a little bit of history, as we all know here, that there was a meeting last week with the town council chairman, Ortega, was there to represent our interest as well as other areas throughout the town. I went to that meeting and one thing, um, that happened is, it was with Kinder Morgan to specifically talk about some of the town's concerns. And one thing that did happen, um, was that the map that was presented, that, that we thought was the most recent map, Kinder Morgan came with a new up-to-date map and it may have changed a couple more times since then, um, between last Thursday and Friday. And me, that, there's one version up there on the wall. But I think it changed a couple more times and then the comment period ended, um, for FERC. And then, again, this is regarding the NED pipeline. The other thing is that Kinder Morgan is expected to submit the application, um, to FERC, the final application on November twentieth. Um, one of the agenda items that I'd like to put regarding this issue on our agenda is that we consider filing for intervenor status. What that means is that, um, I would like to draft a letter, um, and provide it to the board in advance so that we can vote on that letter on November second. We don't have a lot of time. Um, and what I understand is that intervenor status has to be applied for shortly after the Kinder Morgan would submit the application. So if the twentieth is the date, which is my best guess right now, that very soon thereafter, we would want to be ready to go as a school board entity to be able to fly, file for intervenor status as a school board entity. Now, I also understand the town is, uh, planning to file for intervenor status, but, um, what that really means is that if we were granted the intervenor status, should at any point, um, during this process, we come up with additional concerns, that it would require then that Kinder Morgan needs to address them. Um, so the letter is basically, um, something that would allow the school board, the way I see it is to reserve its rights, um, to be able to make a comment or a letter or inquiry at a future date, depending on our wishes, um, collectively as a group. So that's the first agenda item that I'd like to request.
And just before you move off that, a, am I correct in, in saying that intervenor status is available only to public governing bodies and not to the public at large?
I'm not sure of the actual legal requirements of the intervenor status. It appears that it is more common, um, that it's a, a government entity is an entity likely to file. But there may very well be other reasons why people would file and then be granted.
Great.
I just don't know enough about it to know the specific requirements of why it would be applied and then...
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, secondly, the other thing is that we as a board come up with a policy for, um, Kinder Morgan surveys. So if this, if Kinder Morgan were to approach the school district or maybe a principal even at, you know, one of our schools, um, you know, that we have a policy in place to be able to address that so that we know how that would, that would, um, be handled. So the way I understand it is with the town council, Kinder Morgan had showed up recently asking to do a survey, um, and it's very likely that, or depending, who knows? Maybe likely, unlikely, just if it comes up, that we already have a policy on how we would handle it. So those are, that's the heads up on the two agenda items I'd like to see addressed.
Thank you. Yes, um, we will add those, uh, to our next agenda. I, I actually got a call from, uh, Town Council Chair Nancy Harrington, uh, Saturday morning to let me know that, uh, Kinder Morgan was discussing, uh, the surveying and to give us, uh, a heads up that we would most likely be contacted soon and that, um, I, I would agree that we should have a position in terms of how those surveys are conducted. And I believe that the way that the town has approached this in regards to their role as the public overseers of public lands, um, and trying to make those surveys as transparent as possible by having representatives from the governing body and, uh, uh, in their case, town office, in our case, central office would be a, a good thing to have in place, so, um, absolutely. Mr. Marcus, I saw you had your hands up.
I'm all set. You kinda answered my question. I was gonna ask which definition of survey she meant, but it's land survey.
Land survey?
Yeah.
Those synonyms. Okay, any other new business to come before the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Mr. Powell?
So I spoke a little, or a little bit earlier about the healthcare cost containment committee meeting that occurred this past Wednesday on the fourteenth. In addition, just to bring everyone up to date, the health assessment completion percentage to date dropped a little bit from August. September's number came in at fifty-three point nine percent, down a little from fifty-four, um, which is understandable because we have new hires and they haven't gotten into the system to be able to take it yet. So we fully expect that number to increase. Um, we, we have a ways to go, a hundred, a hundred some odd employees to reach out to, to reach our goal of sixty-six percent by the end of the year. And again, this is on a calendar year, not the, um... And again, this is on a calendar year, not the benefit year or the, or the contract year. So there are plans in place to, to reach out. Each building representative has been given a list of new hires to approach and encourage to take the assessment. There was also information given to us that on November 18th, 23rd, and December 7th, there's going to be meetings at the middle school, Reeds, and Reeds Ferry, that Health South is going to be attending, and I believe they're at staff meetings, to do a presentation on Smart Shopper. Again, Health Trust is extending themselves and giving themselves, making themselves available as much as possible to get this Smart Shopper tool out there. And I can't emphasize how important utilization of this tool is because it affects our bottom line as far as claims paid. And as we all know, the experience factor, which drives our rates, can be greatly affected by that. So the next meeting is coming up quick on November 4th, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Just clarifying question, when you were going through that, I heard the name Health South come out. Did you mean Health Trust?
I apologize if I said Health South, I meant Health Trust.
That's, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't another health entity in there.
I missed it, yeah.
I think you're very focused.
Any other committee reports or updates? Mr. Marcus?
I just wanted to bring a few things to the board's attention as far as goings-on at the high school go. And first and foremost, I wanted to let you guys know that last week, it was last Thursday, a delegation from South Korea came to our school. And they're from a foreign language school in South Korea where they learn, they major in English, Japanese, or Mandarin, so that they can become global business leaders. And these were the students who were majoring in English. And this was the second time they've visited in as many years. And Mr. Johnson, Principal Johnson, I should say, he's hoping that, well, they're planning on making it a recurring thing so that we can continue to strengthen the bond between our two schools. And when they came, we had an assembly, or the entire student body and the Korean delegation, Korean delegation, excuse me. We went to the bleachers near the foot, in front of the football field, and we heard an address from the South Korean school's principal and his student translator. And then Mr. Johnson, their student body president, and then our senior class president all spoke. And then they had a, I don't really know what the word for it was, but they did a musical performance. It was a kind of percussion band. It was very South Korean, was a good embodiment of their culture, I think. And they played for us, and then the marching band did our halftime show for them, which they thought was really cool because they don't really have marching bands in South Korea. And then throughout the rest of the day, they stopped in different classrooms in smaller groups, and our classes would do a presentation for them, and they would present to us. I know they came into my AP Government and Politics class, so we talked to them about issues in American government. And we tried to talk about what we were talking about in class, but that was federalism, and that's harder to put into words that aren't really nuanced. So we kind of verged away from that. And then they taught us a game that's been used for hundreds, thousands of years to, I don't wanna give you a definite number, but it's been used for a really long time to, they do it at New Year's and then the Harvest Festival, to predict the success of farms. So that was all in all an enriching experience. It was really cool to see them. And I also wanna note that Merrimack High School is the only school they stop at while they're here. So we, Mr. Johnson really harped his negative, but Mr. Johnson made it clear that we were really representing not just the school, but even the country as a whole. And wanted to make sure you guys knew about that. And then, I also wanted to talk about the different service groups that we have at our school, 'cause I realized about a week ago, as, 'cause they're all starting about right now, that we have six of them, six different service groups at our school to volunteer in the community. And I just wanted to list those off so that you guys were aware of how the students are trying to give back to Merrimack and the rest of the school district. And the most visible one is the National Honor Society, which is under President Melissa Lozama. And they're currently prepping for the induction of all of the junior applicants, the successful ju, junior applicants and the successful senior re-applicants. But then after that, they start their regular community service projects, the first of which I think is leafraking for elderly citizens in Merrimack. And then next, we have random acts of kindness under President Rachel Easley. And among other things they do throughout the year, two weeks ago, they did caps for cancer, where students were encouraged to donate a dollar. And then we got to wear a hat in school, which is otherwise not allowed. And they, even though it seems it was creative, but they ended up raising just shy of $300, and they donated that to local families that are struggling in the fight against cancer. And then next, we have the Interact Club with President Sarah Jones. And they do a lot of, it's less focused than a lot of other groups. They do broad, wide-reaching community service projects. And a few weeks ago, they went and cleaned up the Speedway, which, if anyone's ever been to the Speedway, it was definitely in need of cleaning up. And, sorry, this goes on for a while, but I suppose that's a good thing in this case.
It is.
Then there's SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, which you read almost straight out of my notes when you were talking about them.
Sorry.
And that's under President Emily Duval. They are currently, like you said, focusing on the two and two campaign to promote driving safety. And later on in the year, they're most visible with the mock DUI. And Junior Impact, which is an assembly that anyone, everyone goes to before you go to prom to promote safe decisions. And then the two new clubs we have this year are my club, which I mentioned on my first day, the Young Politicians of America, which in addition to raising political awareness, we're also involved in the community with each monthly theme. And as this month is environmental issues, we're going to head out next week and clean up Wasserman Park. And then last but not least, actually possibly most importantly, because you'll be hearing a lot more about this in the future, is Merrimack Cares, which was an idea that the senior class last year, the class of 2015, had. And since then, although it didn't start last year, we've taken it up. And it's headed by Mr. Snell, who used to be the Science Department head. He's no longer the Science Department head. And he still comes back. Yes, he's retired. And he still comes back to the school to head that up. And he's put together a group of core students from all across the school. There are student government leaders, and then kids from sports teams, the music department, kids who do really well in science. It's kids from all over the school. And their goal is to coordinate and plan larger-scale community service projects, first in the school, and then throughout the school district, at which point you guys will be hearing from them. And then, at the, throughout the community at large. And they will be able to do a lot. And I might end up keeping you updated, depending on how updated I stay. So that's it.
I hope you will, because I think it's important for us and, and everyone to hear about these extracurriculars and the fantastic students that we have at the high school who are interested in giving back to their community. So thank you for the update, and please, yes, keep us, keep us updated. Any other committee reports? Okay. Seeing none. Item 11 is public comments on agenda items. I will close public comments on agenda items. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3 Roman numeral 2, subsections A, B, and C, made by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Mr. Schneider. Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Schneider?
Favor.
Mr. Powell?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, so that carries 5-0-0. And Mr. Marcus, your opinion? He's also in favor. Thank you, everyone. Good night.